You all rise and slay.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first meeting of 2024 Wayne County Council. They're calling for a vote for nomination for President of Council. Beth Leisure as President. Second. Move to close nominations.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All yours.
Thank you so much. Now I will open nominations for Vice President.
Nominate Max Smith.
Second.
Move to close nomination.
Second.
Nomination for Max Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed, there are none. Thank you very much. We are ready to get started on 2024. Happy New Year to everybody.
Thanks to all of you.
First up, we just need to approve the minutes from our December 6th meeting.
A move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody's anxious. Any opposed? Motion passes. We will hear now from Adam McQueen about his interpreter grant. We kind of had a little bit of back and forth and you guys are always so good about finding money in your budget and helping us out, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll try to be very quick today.
Okay, that's fine.
Things been fast this morning, so. Excuse me. Wanted to come, first of all, thank you for your time today, Council. Try to be brief. Back in September, I wrote, as our department normally does, a grant to the Supreme Court in order to obtain some money to pay for interpreters for just various reasons, mostly court-related, but. And we've been pretty successful with that for a number of years, probably fifteen or so. Received my response, or the response back from that grant. And basically, what told me a couple of things, one, that they were not going to award any new money to Wayne County for that for 2024. But that they wanted us to exhaust the funds that had been awarded in 2023, allow us to roll them over into 2024. At the time that I wrote the grant, we had just under $4,000. But since I wrote that grant in September, actually, it's been exhausted down to $530. Couple of other things that that, my response said is that the state's going to be moving back to a fiscal year, so that grant application that I completed was only for January 1st to June 30th of this year. I'm going to have another opportunity in May to write another grant. Feel like pretty optimistic about it. I think, you know, just to give you a few things, over the last few years, I know Wayne County's been awarded over $300,000 in this grant. So I have some confidence that we can get some additional funding moving forward, but not until July the 1st. Put myself in a little bit of a scramble whenever I got that response, just to see, okay, what do I, what do I have available to me to cover the need, the interpreter needs for the county? So there's, of course, the $530 that I have, that I have left over from 2023. We have an additional fund, it's money that will never be added to, it's from a fee that was charged a number of years ago. I've always called it the ancillary interpreter fund. Got 22, I'm sorry, $2,254 in that fund.
How much again?
$2,254. In that fund. And so those are the two most obvious. One of the things that I also discussed with my chief probation officer, Corey George, was that probation actually has a contractual professional line item in its county general budget. That's line item 33-200. As of now, there's $2,000 in that line, line item. Corey had graciously, assuming the council might approve that, volunteered that if need be, we could pay interpreter funds from that, from that fund, line item.
Adam, do you have anything on your agenda that's going to look like you're going to need more than that?
I do, thank you for bringing that up. So I did check with each of the judges, just to know sort of what our need would be. On average, we're spending about $1,000 a month on interpreters, some months more than others. I do know that we're going to be having a trial coming up early in the year where one of the courts will require two French interpreters. That will probably be a pretty substantial bill, depending on how long that trial lasts. For really anything other than Spanish, you're looking at a minimum of $200 an hour. That's in, you know, Supreme Court certified interpreters, they can pretty much name, name their price, so. Don't know that there's much else. This year, just something that I always find interesting, what different languages or what different types of interpreters we used in 2023. So Spanish always is always most prevalent, 95% of our claims are Spanish, but this year we also had Tagalog, Georgian, Haitian Creole, American Sign Language, French, and Chiqui. So those were the, our use in 2023, so. It's definitely the more obscure, like, I didn't know what Chiqui was, it's a Mayan language, they speak in Belize, so, yeah, I'd know now, I guess. But if council were to allow us to use that contractual professional line item, I would have in the range of $4,750. I think that's, to me, a good place to at least start the year. I don't know what will come of that new grant for the fiscal year, nor do I know what our, never know what our needs are, our full needs are going to be for the year, but. Wanted to just first off ask if it would be approved to tap into that contractual professional line item in our county general budget if needed, and then to really, if need be, to come back to this, to council if those funds start to get depleted too low.
Adam?
Question.
Sure.
Are you talking about 4108, the Court Interpreter Grant, and 9008?
So that, the 4108 is the, yes, the Supreme Court Interpreter Grant, and then the 9008 is the ancillary interpreter fund?
Because 4108, at least the end of December, was in the hole, 43483, and now yours is to the good five-something.
Sure.
So you're talking about taking care of both, both of those?
I've been, I've talked with Selena several times over the last few weeks, and just provided her with a list of our claims that were submitted to the Supreme Court, what should have been coming in, what should have been going out, and I think that that's still in the works. I'm confident that our books are correct, because I have a paper trail for everything. I guess I'm confident in the fact that we have $530 left.
So, so there are, excuse me, there are two different grants, but is it for the same thing?
I use.
It says Court Interpreter Grant, pardon me, the other one just says Interpreter Grant?
Yes, I would use them for the same thing, for interpreter, interpreters, or if there was a document that needed to be translated. That's pretty much all we've used them for ever. Again, that 9008, that one just labeled Interpreter Fund, that is a fund that's never going to be added to, it's a fee that once was assessed that no longer exists, we just.
Should we maybe use that first?
I would, my, my plan would be exhaust the grant, the Supreme Court grant, because if we don't, that reverves back, and it's, truthfully, I've already got clients sitting on my, on my desk right now. Then the ancillary interpreter fund, and then lastly, contractual professional.
That makes sense.
That would be the, the plan.
Would it be appropriate then, between exhausting those funds with the trials that Adam mentioned, and just run that fund into Brad until he knows what the new grant will hold in July, and then we address him?
I can, I can definitely come back to council.
Let us know where you're at when it gets close to your grant fund.
Adam, there may be other options too, I mean, there could be other areas in your budget you could make transfers into that one.
Yeah, and that, that would be, and we'll know more as the year goes on, just as an example, you know, from month to month, juvenile detention, we don't know exactly what the need's going to be there, it could be high, it could be low. But yeah, there are other places definitely to, to look into pulling from, if you did so. The plan would be to use, no, or to not request any additional appropriation if it can be helped, for sure.
Sounds good. It sounds good, you have a plan, thank you.
Absolutely.
When we first talked, you just needed $6,000 to $12,000 in your account, so this is a much better plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to approve his plan, spend those funds, or?
I have a question for you, Adam. You have some agreement with each individual interpreter?
No agreement, I typically would have them fill out the EFT paperwork from the auditors so that the funds could be moved, and we typically use the same interpreters over and over and over unless it's, you know, one of the languages that I listed, we just don't need a whole lot of, of interpreters, so. Is that in the sense of what they're hourly?
No, if you had a contract or an agreement with individual interpreters, you would need not, council would not need to act on that professional services line item, that's discretionary, you can use that, but absent an agreement.
Funds from the various accounts.
Second.
Any other questions? I'm going to add that we pay additional expenses from line 33-200, just to have that on the record. So all in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? There are none.
Thank you all.
Just let us know what's going on.
Thank you all.
Your next grant.
Thank you.
Okay, we advertised the appropriation of several funds, and they are listed at the bottom of your agenda. These things, these were not advertised when budgets were advertised, and we now have to appropriate these items in these budgets at the bottom of our page. So I guess we need to open up a public hearing, see if there's any questions or comments about that.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have from county edit. $600,000. We have from consolidated edit, number 4906, $4,707,905.97. We have the tourism budget, 7304, of $9,995. We have the ARPA money from 08952, of $11,657,872. And then we have the help fund, 827,537. Does anybody have any questions about any of those, because I have some things we need to talk about on the help fund? The 11 million in ARPA, Jeff, do you, do you want to explain that real quick, where you're at on ARPA?
I don't know if I can do it real quick, but.
You know, I'm asking.
Let me, let me see if I can share some documents with you, and I, I think you have seen this in some form before.
So.
Beth feels is tracking ARPA expenditures. You know, we started with about $12.78 million. We had some expenditures in '22 for some radios for the, for the Sheriff's Department, we've had some expenditures in '23. And when we advertised, the balance for advertising was $11,657,872. Since then, we have spent some more money, and the current balance is $11,374,885 and 86 cents. And so the request is to appropriate all of that money, I don't anticipate we will spend all of it in 2024, but if you recall, we need to commit all of the money by the end of 2024, and then if it's a construction project, we have until the end of 2026 to actually complete those. So the document you see in front of you lists some of the, some of the additional expenditures for 2024. It's broken down into personnel services. 2023 ARPA commitments were on the, primarily on the scanning project for the, for the clerk's office. The help commitments are $5,893,253. Then we agreed on another $500,000 for the fuel tanks at the highway department, which leaves the uncommitted balance of $4,300,000 roughly, and remember, that's, that's when the total was $11,439,393, so. Some of these, some of these entries are dated, but for example, the help projects are all right there. The 2023 projects, you see in the middle of that front page, we have a contract with Baker Tilly, there's some money left over on that, where Baker Tilly is helping us vet projects to make sure that they're appropriate use of funds, they're also assisting with the reporting process. So we committed $15,000, we've spent about $2,400 up to this point. The contractual on the scanning, there's $648 left on the, the contract of $1,080,000. We spent in the past in other road equipment and capital 4000s, we primarily purchased vehicles for the Sheriff's Department with those dollars. Then all of the help projects, we haven't spent any of the help money at this point, except a little bit on grant administration. On the back side, you see some additional comments, and up at the top, the highway fuel tank, which we've agreed to, then the uncommitted but possible expenditures, which we've talked about a couple of times, but we have not committed to yet. $500,000 for a hardscape landscape of the government complex here. New cabling and data is probably the closest one, I think, to actual agreement on the number, because Craig Easton has, has gotten some estimates on the cost, and it's going to cost $500,000 to run two cables to each workstation for the county. That will allow faster speeds for internet and computer usage, it also will allow for a VoIP phone system. This does not include the cost of, of the phone system, but it includes getting the cabling to all of the desks that would use those in the future. And Craig and the IT department are still working on a plan that would be a part of, of the general fund in our regular budget, not the ARPA fund, but ARPA, we're requesting $500,000 to pay for that cabling. Then we've got two roofs at the, at the fairgrounds that need to be replaced on the coolman and the horse barn, that's estimated at $300,000. And then $250,000 for security upgrades in this building and the courthouse primarily. And one of the, the major projects there would be to go to a, a system of locks that are, are actuated with a proximity card, so that we can get rid of most of the keys that are floating around, and in 50 years that this building has been around, there are literally hundreds of keys that are floating around, so it's hard to secure the building when there's that many keys out there. So this would be a change in, in how we operate, and there would still be some keys for emergencies when people don't have their prox card with them, but we want to shift to a system where you can scan your prox card and it'll unlock the door. We don't have a, a hard estimate for that, but that's what the 250 is, is set aside for there. If those are approved, and again, they're not officially approved at all, that leaves $2,750,982 that is still, would still not be committed, uncommitted. So the two ways to go about this would be, and probably the easiest for today, would be to simply approve $4,300,982 as uncommitted ARPA dollars, but appropriated, and then we can work through what those, what those specific projects will be. We still need to have conversations at the commissioner level, you all need to have conversations at the, at the council level. We will, we will, in the next few weeks, hopefully, a month or two at most, give you recommendations from the commissioners on those uncommitted funds, and, and take your input, obviously, you'll need to commit to those as well. It has been processed for council to, to not appropriate those dollars necessarily before there's that agreement, and so obviously, that's an option for you. We don't have to appropriate everything, but we can come back to it later, if you're more comfortable doing it that way. Just want you to be aware of where we're at with the ARPA funds. Time is going to start to, to put some pressure on us to make some decisions. Just making a decision on how we're going to expend those dollars is not, by federal government standards, a commitment. We need to sign a contract to do the work, or have some agreement to expend the funds, whether that's a contract with a contractor, or an interlocal agreement with another government unit. There needs to be some kind of written documentation that the funds are committed before it qualifies as being committed from the federal perspective, and that needs to happen by the end of this year.
I mean, in the past, I'd have been weary about committing the whole thing, preparing the whole thing, but I have confidence that you're not going to go do projects and spend money without blocking with us, because we've all been working together, so.
You know, I've made that a priority for my term as a commissioner, that we need to talk, that this needs to be a team of 10, not, not two separate teams, and we need to communicate, work together as best we can to make the best decisions for the county. So that's where we're at. Whatever your, your preference is there, we're, we're comfortable with how you want to handle it. Let me just back up to the county edit, the $600,000 there, remember that $500,000 of, of that money is committed to help projects, and so we need that to be appropriated. The other $100,000 is, it's been typical to have $100,000 appropriated to the commissioners for unforeseen circumstances. Again, it's always my intent that unless there's some unusual emergency where we have to commit it before you meet again, to always talk it over with you guys before we make those kind of decisions. There are a few line items that, that we have had in the past. There's a utilities line item, off the top of my head, I want to say it's been about $12,000, but we pay for lighting at the industrial park, and there are a couple of welcome to Wayne County signs throughout the county that, that are lighted, that have utility bills associated with them, so. In the past, there's been a budget for this, and I wish Ron Cross were, were here today, because one of the things with, with a lot of these appropriations will be, we know the number that we want to appropriate, we don't have a, a line-by-line budget for everything, and Mark, I'm assuming that the preference would be to have an individual line items and the money appropriated into those individual line items. So I'm not sure how we go about doing that, some of these are more pressing than others, you know, on, on ARPA and on this, on this county edit, I think we could, we could agree to appropriate the money and then come back at the workshop with a line-by-line budget that we work out with you to identify exactly where those, those dollars are going. But others, the consolidated edit, for example, which includes the, the, the EDC's budget for the year, we actually, I think we have something from Valen Schaefer that addresses where, where the commitments have been made, and how much they are. It says amount yet to be paid, those are the commitments that we want to have line items for. You did approve the, the EDC's operating budget, did you not, in, in September or October? I believe you did. So all that's in, on this sheet, and I apologize for it being so small, but the number for the EDC budget is just the total budget, it's not broken down line by line, but I think you've already approved that. Do you know off the top of your head, is the, is the EDC operating budget specified? Okay. And, and they will need at least, the way their contract reads with us, they get 50% of their operating budget in January, and then two more payments of 25% each, and I forget what month, but in the summer and then in the fall, I think they get the final 25%, but, you know, we, we will need to get them that 50% quickly, so we'll need to appropriate these dollars. And that's the, the total amount of $4,707, you can see that there's $5,800 currently in that, in that fund, and that number is the end of 2023 number, so it does not include the revenue from consolidated edit that will be coming into the fund in 2024, which is approximately $1.6 million. So, so they'll have ample funds for all of their commitments and, and for new commitments, if there are some in 2024.
Some of this stuff's still fluid on here too, like, we haven't even heard the presentation on the emergency communication powers yet, and I expect that to come out. I'm sure Barry does too, to go up from what we.
Exactly.
But there's other things here that are going to come under, going to have a lot.
Some will be under, some will be over, we're going to have to do cleanup on the fly as we, as we make final commitments with those contracts, and, and so, you know, we need to, we need to get started.
Yeah, and we're going to have to have all these projects for the uncommitted dollars and the. and the over, underage from all this other stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we gotta have that ready to go.
We've talked a little bit in the past about everything that is, is uncommitted. And everything that's in, well, almost everything that's in the help money is out of lost revenue. Okay, so you remember we were able to declare ten million dollars as lost revenue? And so the definition of how you can use lost revenue is essentially for any, any governmental purpose that is legal for a municipality to, to spend money on. So one option is that we can replace expenditures that are in the general fund budget or in some of the, our other budgets with ARPA funds to make sure we get them spent if that becomes an issue. That then would, would free up that money that we do not spend in general fund to do projects if we choose to at a later date. But we do have to make a commitment. We have to get the money spent in the appropriate time. And that means that, that we may need to look at, particularly in the second half of this year, spending it on things that aren't necessarily on that priority list of projects. But we get it spent and then we can use other resources to do those priority projects.
Anyone have any questions for Jeff?
The Tourism Bureau, you, you approved their budget. And, and they, as I understand it, they have put a, a dollar amount of their projected income from the innkeeper's tax. And so that money will, will need to be, it'll need to be put into Gateway if it's not. But that nine hundred, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred is the budget they presented to you a few months ago. And the health fund.
Help talk about that.
You ready for her?
Sure, if you're done, if Ziva have any other questions about.
Any questions? I mean, I know we're, we've, we've put this together on, kind of on the fly to make sure that we have the, the timeline of getting it advertised. But these are, these are important, important appropriations. And one of the things we need to make sure of is that in, for twenty twenty-five, we get all of these things approved with the regular, well, I think we can approve them through the regular budget process. And we've done that in the past, but some of these slipped through, so. And ARPA is, is new, so we appropriated some money last year, but that was done as an additional appropriation, not as a, a budget. So, any questions? Thank you.
Pardon, Becca? So we advertised your full budget of eight twenty-seven, five thirty-seven. So we can, we can appropriate any amount up to that. We have five hundred thousand dollars in our budget for the health department that we need to first transfer into there. This all goes until eleven fifty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we need to discuss, are we just going to appropriate the whole amount of her budget? Are we gonna just do the five hundred thousand and wait till later to see what makes sense? They, we received the money from the state yesterday for the Health First Indiana.
Yay, I know.
That, that was eight hundred and one thousand and change. That's for the.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. And we are required to match that with an average of the last three years of their budget, so, or of what we've contributed. So the required match is seven twenty-one, six seventy-three. So.
So you got an amount.
Seven hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. So if we only do the five hundred from our budget, we're still obligated for sure, the, the two twenty-one, six seventy-three. But it's, I wanna hear what council wants to do. There's a, there's a question, too.
Yeah, so I talked to the regional director. He's meeting with the Indiana State Department of Health, Health First Indiana attorney at nine o'clock this morning to ask that question about if the surplus funds from our budget from last year can be used as part of that match that's required, the seven hundred twenty-one thousand. And so we have to wait and find out what that attorney says this morning.
And, and what is the surplus funds?
My understanding is it's about four hundred thousand. And there's a little bit of confusion on my part because of the revenue. Maybe Mark can speak differently on that, but based off the numbers I've looked at.
We've been dealing with her, trying to figure this out. And I don't think we've come to a conclusion yet as to the total amount that you have left over. We need, still need to do that. And my opinion is we can use that money to match this, this grant. But again, you have an attorney you're gonna deal with. A little better, you'll be more comfortable with that than you will with me.
And I can call you as soon as I find out this morning what they say.
So. I was told.
I would just add, the number, the number we came up with was two hundred forty-four thousand, sixty dollars.
Okay.
But again, I, I don't know where the confusion is. I just, I just used a, a fund report. As of last Friday, that's what was, was there. But the money came in after I looked on Friday. I don't know, but that, that's the number I have.
So the excess funds that are left would still need to be appropriated and secured.
So we'd have to.
So if we appropriated the full amount of the eight twelve seven plus, then that could be made, the other five hundred, if they are budgeted up, the excess that's left over and wherever all that comes from. But if we appropriate that total amount, then we got self-coverage.
And there'll be extra money left over that's not appropriated. If we do just, I mean, we can only do the eight twenty-seven, 'cause that's what we advertised. If, if she has two forty-four and we give her five hundred, like, you know, then I guess we're at seven forty-four. And we could wait and see what happens.
Which is in the sense of the match.
Yeah, a little bit.
So my fault would be to appropriate the full eight twelve seven.
You're talking about the, the state of Indiana health fund, of which we got yesterday eight hundred one thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're kinda talking about both, I think.
Yeah, we're talking about her budget amount and that.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe that those, that budget is currently already there. You agree that that budget's already there?
For which one?
For the eight hundred one thousand?
Yeah, that money already is budgeted for.
Okay. Is it then appropriated, that, that be available to spend?
Yes. If, if you have approved that budget, which we did back at the budget hearing time, as soon as she gets money, I can write a check.
Which you got yesterday.
Which we got yesterday. So we're, we're in the, we now have those monies that were in the grant that it belongs to. We have the appropriation through the budget process. And now, when you give me a bill, I'll pay it.
Okay. And there's three employees paid out of that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We were scrambling, trying to figure out how we're gonna do that. So, yeah, if we go ahead and appropriate the whole amount. But, but five hundred of that has to come from our budget.
Right.
Which is already appropriated, so we need to just.
It's appropriated, transferred to them, but then it needs to be appropriated for them to spend.
For them to spend, that's right, okay. Okay. So that, to me, that sounds like the most logical thing to do. Does anybody have any other questions about?
Well, I don't, we're only about eighty thousand dollars different between the seven forty-four. Was that a motion, Mike?
No, discussion that I.
I think we can take it to hold this.
I would move that we approve the advertised appropriation amounts for these five line items.
Do we need to change the ARPA amount? You said it was less than, than this.
The ARPA amount is. The amount that you see in the fund balance of eleven million, three seventy-four, eight eighty-five, the right-hand column there.
Okay, so we need to change that one over to that amount.
Lower that one, yes.
Becca, I have a quick question. Jeff, when did you get your fund bal, your fund report for the two hundred forty-four thousand on eleven fifty-nine? I got one from Lending yesterday afternoon. And that one is two hundred and fifty thousand, four twenty-seven, thirty-eight.
I got it on Friday.
Mine was older than his, too, so yours is probably the most accurate.
So do you wanna change, does, does anyone change anything, right?
No, what she's talking about is, is appropriating, you're gonna appropriate eight twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Five thirty-seven. But part of that will be made up by two hundred, what'd you say, two fifty?
It's two fifty, four twenty-seven, thirty-eight.
So two fifty.
Excess period.
Right. So then, whatever the.
Funds that's taken.
Correct, correct. So you have five hundred, you've got the two fifty. And then whatever, whatever else you need to make up. You need to identify, obviously, where, where you're gonna take it from. But then you need to appropriate it in the, in the eleven fifty-nine health fund. And I talked to DLGF yesterday, and they told me that we would need to make sure that we went back and amended the miscellaneous revenue account to reflect that whatever else you're putting in today, the five hundred plus, needs to be reflected as, as miscellaneous revenue for twenty twenty-four.
It's the same process you, you did last year when you transferred six hundred thousand on twenty-three to the health department. Now we gotta, this is gonna be an ongoing thing every year. So as Jeff said, we, it, we need to move that money just like we did in twenty twenty-three. So we need to have the matching money met out of your budget, since you don't have eleven.
So our total's seven fifty-four, twenty-seven, thirty-eight, according to the fund report and our five hundred. If we wanna do the whole eight twenty-seven, we've got to also take that money from somewhere else, the difference.
Pardon? But we can appropriate the full eight twenty-seven. They just don't have today eight hundred twenty-seven thousand in the bill.
Where's seventy-seven?
That's great. And so when, when they get some of this fund in there, or we put some in there up to this amount, they can spend.
That's right.
They can't spend the full eight twenty-seven today, but there's not that amount.
They only get half of it anyway.
They can only spend what they have in cash. You can appropriate as much as you want up to this advertised amount. Yeah. And, but they can't spend it until they have the money in the bank.
Well, remember, DLGF has to approve the, the appropriation. And so they set the appropriation at zero because their, the revenue was not reflected in the paperwork. So at minimum, I would suggest that we need to make sure the, the revenue, miscellaneous revenue is updated in Gateway to reflect that there will be that revenue. And, and I would suggest that we just go ahead and move the money now so that it's, it's all there. Well, I'm saying the five hundred plus, whatever the additional is, to meet this, this budget number of eight twenty-seven, five thirty-seven.
Additional seventy-seven, one oh nine sixty-two.
I would suggest you move the twenty, or the, the five hundred thousand plus the seventy-seven. But that's, that's your decision. It still needs to be reflected that there is that revenue in Gateway.
Contingency or one time? I didn't know what happened. Take the, the seventy-seven and change out of our contingency or our one time.
Remember, you're gonna reduce that one time by a million, four, and some change. So you don't have three million in there.
No, we have.
We don't have a, a million and a half in there. Then you have contracts we're gonna carry forward for this stuff.
That, that stuff's, we won't be using our, our one time money for any of this. Oh, you mean these things?
Yes. Because we're gonna carry those forward. Is that not?
It was supposed to be encumbered.
We're gonna encumber it, that's correct.
Okay.
So that won't affect.
So it won't affect our.
Then we're gonna look at it, I'll look at it again and see how much money you have left. Have to, we have to get with Mr. Cross so we can reduce that line item by the million four that we need to do when we make our budget work.
But most of this period, or most of it, it's needed on this sheet. Which I'm talking about shortly, which is the number.
These, on this sheet?
Yeah.
I'm in the process of doing that as soon as I get contracts for each of those.
So the motion still is the fund piece by line.
Yeah. Do we first need to transfer the five hundred thousand from our council budget? I think we need to get that in there, then we can appropriate it. So I'll need a motion to transfer.
I think you, I think you should.
Yeah, then we can appropriate it, yeah.
So you can then appropriate.
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we transfer the five hundred thousand that's currently in the council budget to eleven, Sunday eleven fifty-nine.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Now, I think.
Shouldn't we transfer the other seventy thousand? The fully funded eight twenty-seven?
Yeah, if we're gonna add the seventy-seven, one oh nine sixty-two, that's the number, that's the difference. We need to transfer that from wherever council says, one time or council contingency.
I think we do it out of a contingency.
Contingency.
So my.
Motion by John. Second by Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So that was five hundred transferred and seven seven, one oh nine point six two was transferred. And now.
That's a quick question.
Okay.
Do you have to, did Mark bring any paperwork to sign for the bookkeeper to, to do all this? What are those transfers?
The way it tracks is as we go along.
Well, you gotta have the transfer paper signed, so they do it in a gaster.
Okay, so that's our meeting zone. Okay. Now we are at the amounts on here with the reduced amount on ARPA.
Back to my motion then.
Yes.
Handle these five lines as advertised, except for the ARPA, which was reduced to eleven million, three seventy-four.
I have a motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you, you have money.
Yay, thank you. If it's any consolation, the match is only about half next year, so that's good.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have an ARPA transfer. Jeff, can you explain what happened with this?
I think so.
I know.
So you'll recall that in twenty twenty-two, we used ARPA dollars to buy radios for the sheriff's department. And that was paid in full for the equipment. But as part of that contract, there was an additional fee of ten thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars and fifty cents to program the radio. and fifty cents to program the radios. Uh, and so this came in to us from the Sheriff's Department. Uh, so we need to, we want to pay that out of ARPA. Um. I'm not sure exactly, now you just you just did the the appropriation for ARPA, so, um, with with your approval, we can take it out of the uncommitted, um, ARPA line item if you're good with that.
Did you repeat the number?
It is, yeah.
Ten thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
There's the.
I would move the way of three minutes to just ten thousand, seven fourteen, thirty on ARPA. Which is it?
It's fifty. The last two.
Can't read my number.
Second. All in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we've got the papers on that. Okay. Now we have Commissioner's comments. Go just sit down for Jeff. We've got Steve.
Okay, referring to your sheet, not much physically has happened over the last couple of weeks due to the holidays, but a couple of things that's changed as far as product delivery. So looking at the annex generator project, we continue to receive items, uh, components to that project pretty regular. Uh, I think we're getting everything but the generator itself, so I can't give you a timeframe on the start of that yet. But we still, we still are getting product delivered on that. The council chambers, we did approve a product that they showed us this past week for the finishing of this bulkhead up here. And, um, as soon as that arrives, they'll they'll start the installation of that. The jail window replacement, that project, the the product was delivered last week and that product, uh, project actually starts today. And just a reminder on that, remember that this this number that you see in your budget is a is a catch-up. Remember, there was a lot of windows that were broken inside the cell blocks. And when we talked about this, I think back in June, I indicated that this is going to be an ongoing expense because of these windows get broken occasionally. I think, well, and I'll, we'll talk more about this as the project goes along, but I think, uh, with the money that you appropriated in Q cap, uh, the additional money, I think this is something that we can probably, uh, pick up as an ongoing cost from that. But we'll we'll share those numbers with you as they continue to come in. Then the First Bank Expo Hall HBAC, uh, got word yesterday that the HBAC units will be shipped in February. Uh, they're coming from Texas, so we anticipate a ten-day shipment on that. So I think that looks like that'll start last of February or first of March. And then you, in your, um, consideration for those additional appropriations this morning on the the ARPA fund, remember Jeff talked about the Coleman roof and the horsebound roof, horse barn roof. So if you, we get to the stage when we fund those out of ARPA, those two numbers will go away from this sheet because currently we've earmarked those to come out of the council one time. But if we move those to ARPA, those those numbers will go away from this sheet. We want to get that under bid before spring so that just as soon as the weather breaks, that they can get started on those. And you talked a little bit about the the incomers, and I kept that number to the lower right-hand, uh, column there. And Mark spoke about the contracts. I think we'll we'll go ahead and replace those contracts. I think most of those should have been already in the auditor's office because these were from twenty twenty-two. But we'll, we've got contract copies that we can make sure that they get that, uh, so that they can demonstrate that in the case of a state board of accounts audit, that they can match up those contracts with the amount that's encumbered. And then a number that, uh, is kind of going to be an approximate number, but remember, you're going to end up with about one point five million in your council one time after transferring out that one point four plus the encumbrance, so it's going to be about a two point six million dollar balance after the encumbrance and after the remainder, uh, after that transfer. Any questions?
Isn't it the contractor for Zoom or?
Just as soon as the weather breaks, I would anticipate first of April. Because they want to, you know, they can't, they don't want to set up their equipment and then get bad weather, so it'll it'll probably be the first of April. I expect they'll be here most of the summer.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of extra comments from me. We ended twenty twenty-three with, uh, around eleven million dollars in the general fund. Uh, so, you know, we're we're in good shape. We did spend, um, more money than we typically have in the past to get some of these projects accelerated. Uh, we are clearing them, as you can see, from from this list. Uh, I invited Steve to take off a bunch of the projects that had been completed. Uh, you don't need to just see all that green, but keep in mind that that we are, uh, making progress and, uh, we will be talking to you in the coming coming weeks about additional projects that we want to put on the table for this year, um, and and start to plan for twenty twenty-five so that we, uh, were able to work these things into the budget as we as we move forward. So I think we're, uh, we're in good shape. I feel, uh, pretty, pretty comfortable with where we're at financially. Um, we're, uh, we're making progress on eliminating some of the the backlog of of, uh, maintenance issues that, uh, have accumulated. But, uh, we're we're in good shape. Uh, we will continue this year on, uh, a quarterly basis, starting in January, to meet with all elected officials as part of our, uh, our commissioner meetings. So the fourth Wednesday of January at nine thirty will be our next, uh, elected official and department head joint meeting. You're all invited to that. One of the, one of the things on the table there will be implementation of the new parking policy uh, that we'll be discussing in its, uh, in its entirety at, uh, at that meeting. But please keep those in mind. So January, April, July, and October, uh, the fourth Wednesday of of the month will be the schedule for for those joint meetings of elected officials and and department heads.
Yeah, it starts at eight.
Sorry?
Starts at eight AM.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Well, they're very interesting meetings. I encourage anybody who can to come to that. Um, Craig always has good updates about this phone system and the cable and all that.
Absolutely.
Our new phone system, I mean, it gone are the days of just buying a system and keeping it for forty years. Now it's going to be a monthly.
Yeah, we've already done that.
We've done that. Yeah, it'll, this now turns into a a monthly charge for how many phones you have. And then we've always got updated phones coming, and if something breaks, it's fixed.
Well, remember.
There's advantages.
Craig is is planning to, uh, to lease those phones. And, um, and ease into it one department at a time, so, uh, he'll update you as we go on what his budget needs to be. I think.
We see some numbers.
If I remember correctly, the increased cost for the phone system, uh, when it's fully implemented will be something like seventy thousand dollars a year. Uh, so we'll need to figure out how we can fit that into the budget going forward. But, uh, it will be a much, uh, more robust system, so. Be happy to answer any questions. If not, Happy New Year to everybody. Look forward to working with you in the coming year. We're we're, uh, making good progress. Thank you.
Jeff, committee reports? Our next, uh, yes?
Not really a committee.
That's okay.
Um, Mark, the end-of-year transfers, do you have a list of those?
We have put together, and we've done a lot of them already, based on what you wanted to have me do. The end-of-year transfers, I need to get with you to go through those and show you how I'm going to do all of this. We're not going to.
Council has to approve those, so.
That's great. And I'll put those together, and then you and I are going to sit down, we'll go through to make sure I'm getting everything. But I will tell you that, um, well, I hate to do this. When I came into office, not all of the budgets have been entered in the computer from twenty, uh, that should have been in twenty-two. So we're we're going through them now and seeing what what I want to do actually with those budgets that are in the red, where it sits, so that I can, uh, make sure that the twenty-three and twenty, or yeah, the twenty-four budget is done correctly. If you notice, uh, we've downloaded all of the twenty-four budgets through LAL. And you now have access to LAL. You can look at the, in your computer. We could be giving all of you access and and, um, permission to get in. You can't change anything, but you can look now. When Jeff and I went through this yesterday, uh, you're going to have questions, just like he did, and we're going to have to show you how to do this. But you, the the report you have in paper, uh, for the County General Fund and then the four or five other funds that you highway, um, whatever those funds total, you can now get in anytime and look and see cash balances, what's been done to them, transfers you've made to those budgets. You don't have, balances? You've been talking this morning about a balance on the County General Fund. Right now, if you want to look and you know how to do it, you can look and see exactly what the County General Fund balance was at the end of the year.
So Mark, who from your office is going to provide a training session to us on how to?
I don't know yet. You speak, we can't do that, but we can't do that today.
We don't have that.
I understand, and it's, we just got it done as of last week. Jeff was the guinea pig yesterday, and I was too, because I haven't done it. So I had to have somebody go through there and show me how to do it. I understand that there's going to be, you're going to have a lot of questions. Uh, and in reference to a question Max had, we're going to let you get into all of the County General. You can look at any budget in County General, any budget, uh, any money in the highway, in the Coon Building. And there's four or five different funds that you maintain that you need access to. You can't change anything, I'm not going to let you do that. But you can get in there and, when you're sitting at home at night and you want to see what's going on, take the time to look, you can do it. And you, it will show you everything, it will show, uh, what you had this morning on the, um, in paper. Look at it, you and you can see it as part of the project that I'm going through to allow a full computerization of the county. I can see, and, no, I don't have plans right now to show you how to do this, but I'm going to have to. Uh, Jeff, I had to drag him along through it to get it done. It's, um, we're just going to have to sit down with all, everybody. I'm going to have that problem with over the whole county with everybody that wants to look at their budget. And we're already getting calls on how to do that. So every office holder in the county can look at his budget, his or her budget, and track what they're spending, compare it to what they think they're spending. When they find an error, they can come to me and we'll, we'll look at it and see what the errors are. But as of right now, it's all out there for you guys.
Well, absent, um, training on getting into LAL and navigating, being able to to find what we're looking for, in twenty-three, we started out with a pledge from you to provide us with a, uh, fund balance report each month.
Which we do.
We've not received one of those in quite some time, and Kathy has a copy. I think that it's incumbent on the auditor's office to provide counsel with that report each month. So as we're asked to transfer money, appropriate money, we can refer to that. Now, once we are trained on LAL, we do it ourselves.
All of that information's available in my office. Kathy comes in quite often to get that information.
What I'm asking from you as an elected official is you have the responsibility to provide that to counsel and that we have that for these meetings.
If you have any questions about any fund or any appropriation in there, ask me.
Okay, I'm asking.
He's just saying we want to get that, like an email at the end of the month with the fund report for all of us.
I can do that.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
You can do that. We've been used to that in the past.
You don't know what to ask until.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
What you don't know, you don't know.
I got it. Thanks.
And then once we get access to LAL, then.
I've got to figure out how I'm going to train you guys to do this. It's not, it's, Jeff and I went through it yesterday.
How hard training? Part of our contract?
Oh, I think what more, not to this degree.
Oh, okay.
It it's, it took us what, fifteen, twenty minutes to figure out how to do it?
That is.
Yeah. And Jeff's not really trainable, so we're going to have to.
I'm sorry, you think we're going to be better?
No. And it's.
I do know my password.
Yes, he does. Everybody has given the password, it's out there, now I got to be able to get you to be able to use it. So along with all the other offices that we put on this thing. And this is just the beginning of what we're going to do. So I got to get you here, then we're going to move to something else. The, and so thi- this is going to be a, an extended period of time to do this.
So how about we get access? Are we going to get a letter that tells us how to go on there, and then we make up our own password? Is that what happens?
You already have. All that information that we have has been forwarded to everybody, every office holder that's on this thing. And you're going to tell me you didn't get it, but you got to use a different computer. The, your password, I think.
They're sending it to our county email and the LAL.
Yeah.
Most of us don't use the county email.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's probably why.
Anything sent to the county email?
Most of us don't.
Well, I have to show you how to do that.
I'm the exception.
Well, getting getting back to my question.
Okay.
Final question.
Yes.
When can we get, uh, a list of transfers needed at the end of the year?
I'm going to get with, uh, the guy that does that, I'm not too sure in my mind, exactly what you want. And after the last meeting, I thought we were going to get together and discuss this, so I could see.
Well, the the last one you, it was stated that the only transfers were these, which were just payroll transfers.
Those were payroll transfers to clean up before the end of the year.
We should have a list of anything, any line item, line item that is in the red and, um, how we're going to do the the transfers within that.
Because we need to have those at our next meeting.
You need to prove the change, if there's going to be any.
Yes, yes.
I still need an opportunity to sit down with you, Mr. Leader, to to go through that because of the problems that we had from twenty-two to twenty-three. And I don't know particularly right now how I'm going to do that. I need to, some of them, if there is money and you have an appropriation in your two hundred series or two thousand series, that one appropriation is in the red and you got one in the black, I'm not going to do anything with those. There are so many of them that, uh, as long as the money and appropriation is sufficient to carry that, then that died on January first of twenty-four. The budgets did. Then we we moved to the twenty-four budget. I I just, I need an opportunity. I just, I need an opportunity to sit down with, this is what we talked about at the last meeting, to sit down. I can't just give you everything right now that I believe you need to make a change with. I need to sit down with you, see what you want, we'll go through it.
It, it, it's pretty simple. I want to know what line items are in the red and what transfers, what other lines we can, that are in the black, that we can transfer to the red so that at the end of the year, nothing's in the red.
You say this is simple.
We've done that for years and years and years and.
Okay, I got you.
You kind of made the decision that you weren't going to do anything with it. I mean, that's, again, that's our decision.
Well, if, okay. Again, it's not simple. And I think sometimes other people other than the, in the office think this is an easy thing to do, just have to hit a button, it's taken care of. That's not the situation I have with this. And I'll ask again. After we met last time, I was told that two of you.
He did say that.
Or three were going to come in and deal with me so I can go through this thing.
But we need a list, Mark.
I don't have it because you haven't told me what all you want a list of.
A list of any line item that is in the red. Any other auditor that we've ever had has been able to do that at the end of the year.
I'm not every other auditor that you have.
Well, I, I, I would concur.
I will go through that with you as you said you would do. I will write off everything that is in the red that if you want to make a change in, we can.
That's what, that's what we want.
But I can't, go ahead.
If I can, if I can jump in here, and Mark's chief deputy is out and has been for a while, she's going to be gone for a while, so he's a little bit shorthanded, not to make excuses. But what I'm wondering is if in Lao, if there is a report that you could just pull up that would give those balances that would show that you could give to Tony and Beth, I think they were our two people, to show what's in the red.
The lady that.
Do the whole thing.
Does that, is off today.
Right.
We've discussed it. We have looked at, well, I think is.
Yeah, I just think there's several different reports in Lao that, excuse me, you could just pull up one of those that would serve, suffice for what they're looking for.
I will try to put that stuff together. I know that, that you feel like the previous auditors gave you that. And I, I will disagree that a lot that was not done in the manner that you thought it was. So what I'm saying to you is, I was told we were, I was going to meet with some of the, three of you or two of you about this. And I still want to do that, and I will go through this thing, line item by line item of what's in the red, and see if you want to really mess with some of those. Some of them, you don't have to do anything. If there is an appropriation that offsets another one, I wouldn't mess with it. That, that corrects itself. So again, I will go through that and I will make a list of things, but I still want to talk to, to, to two of you about this before I give you anything.
Okay. We'll start at the time before we leave today to try to meet. Okay?
Beth, I do have a question for Jeff. For Jeff. On the 22nd of November, I received an email from the auditor's office stating that IT would be installing Lao financial software onto my computer. When you meet with Craig, did you ask him what the plan is for elected officials who do not have a county computer?
Sure.
If he's going to do that, or, you know, how we're going to access that, that song?
Are there, are there very many that don't have a county computer?
Well, the council doesn't because they have one computer in their office, the council office. Do, do all of you have surfaces?
I have one. I have a county computer.
So what, what we may need to do is, is that you have a laptop or a Surface or something.
Because they won't put it on their personal.
I wasn't going to allow them to put it on their laptop.
No, no. So yeah, you have to have.
I'm meeting with Craig this afternoon, so we'll have that conversation. Yeah.
I'm good. Our workshop is January 17th at 6:00 PM, and our next council meeting is February 7th at 8:00 AM, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Motion in lots of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next time.